... under the commission, I am the senior planner. This is a request to extend a... To... For an extension of a one-year extension to a special use permit that was approved in 2014. This is for a automotive service station in the TOD, or the MUD now. It is a business that had existed at that location for a long time, but it had been vacant for over six months and so needed to reapply under the special use permit provisions in the TOD at the time. They are now requesting an extension of one year to try to finish the work they've been doing to get this up and running. I don't really have any further comments, if you have any questions for me, I'm available, and the applicant is here as well.
Dean, I was reading a letter that was submitted the last time, one or two, I guess one neighbor submitted two letters.
Well, he submitted for the first notice we sent out that had an error, and then he submitted again at the second notice, yes.
Citing fumes for, you know, that issue of fumes coming across the street into the trailer park, I guess it is. Has there been, has there anything that been done to remediate that issue?
There hasn't. I read, obviously, both those letters as well. Very concerned about clientele and about a lot of those things. And while I am sympathetic to his concerns, I don't know that denying the use of a gas station there is going to solve his problems. I mean, a vacant use is not going to be any better than a well-run gas station. And obviously, we know there's fumes associated with gas stations that clear across the street. As long as the gas station's being run as it should, they shouldn't be an overwhelming problem for him. You know, you can't just offhandedly dismiss these things, but at the same time, I don't know what kind of, you know, things we could do to really address his specific concerns beyond, you know, just making sure that things are run as they've been conditioned to be run at the location. They've got to meet the building and, you know, all those kind of conditions that were attached to the original approval should address that, you know, well enough. I didn't know what else to do for him, you know, besides saying, okay, we'll make sure they do things the way they're supposed to.
Dean, he already received a two-year special use permit. It expired.
It hasn't expired yet. It expires this month, and it, yes.
He's asking for another one month or one year.
The one-year extension, yeah, that's written into it.
Can he come back and ask for another one?
No.
This is it.
This is the one extension that's available. If they were to come back again, they'd have to basically go through the whole special use, conditional use permit process again, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ian?
So applicant here and would like to speak?
I am here. I really don't have anything much more to say. I've written you a letter. I'm trying to express what our situation is.
Can you come down, sir? And just say your name? Thank you.
My name is Trudy. I'm with 1111 Connecticut Street Partners. We own that parcel. And I really can't, I can't extend anything more than what I've already provided you. It's very straightforward. It's a situation that just needs more time. And indeed, we intend to fulfill it. That's... I don't have anything I can tell you. I'm happy to answer questions if you'd like.
I have a question, just maybe a question slash comment. I was watching. Anything. Two years ago, when we approved this, I guess I assumed that you wouldn't have gone through the time and effort and trouble and expense to, that's involved in getting to the point where we did approve it, without having something more committed in terms of a tenant or financing or whatever was necessary. And I'm just, I guess I'm, it says nothing to do with our decision, because it's not our business if you choose to do it this way or not. But I'm curious as to, as to the process by which someone would go to the obvious money and time and effort without having something more in hand than you did. And was that, is that, did something change, or is that?
I'm not, I'm not quite certain how to answer that question. Understand that what occurred here was a fire. We had, we had a ongoing gas station that was functioning properly, and we had a fire. The fire was pretty devastating. And that took probably nine to 10 months to resolve. And once it was resolved, we went back in and we repaired the building, and now we needed to go through the process of doing more because things had changed here. The requirements had changed. So we needed to get, we got Frank Lepore involved in the project. And Frank, to be perfectly honest, Frank just kind of directed me and said, this is what you need to do to get this thing up and running. And, you know, I believe him, I still believe him, but I think the, I think the market has been a little tepid, and that hasn't helped us a whole lot. I've got, I've gone through two different agents, and I'm working on my third. It's, it's a tough market. So, you know, I think we were in a position in which we had no other choice. We want to get this up and running, but we don't have anyone that we can lease it to at the moment. Going forward and doing any of the improvements at this point really is foolish, because I, once we get a, once we get a less C, we're probably going to have to go back and readdress that. So the extension is extremely important to us. And I, you know, I'm just about as sincere as I can be with you. I can appreciate your concern, I appreciate your questions, but...
Well, in my case, it wasn't even a concern. I guess I was just curious, because I make the assumption when we, when it gets far enough along to get to the planning commission, that barring a crisis, that it's, something's going to get, something's going to happen. And I was curious as to...
Yeah. Well, I think that that's a good assumption.
Generally.
Yeah. I would agree with you.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, this is a public comment. Public hearing item. If anybody from the public would like to come up and speak on this item. PCN 13024. I'm seeing none. I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Well, we don't, you know, we don't have a suggested motion.
Should have been on the bottom of the memorandum.
Page one.
Of the memorandum.
Oh, I know, I know what you're asking.
Okay, that we recommended, okay, yes, we don't have a suggested motion, I'm sorry.
So we, I would like to make a motion that the planning commission granted a one-year extension on the special use permit on this PCN 13024.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Bring it back for any discussion from any of the commissioners on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's, let's get a gas station there.
Yeah.
All right, now move to general business, which is PCN 15056, and Karen Melby is presenting.
I'm Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you tonight is a tentative map called Waterfront at the Marina. It's a project for 209 condominium units located on a 3.75 acre property, which is zoned PD, and it's part of the Marina Village. Exhibit right now is a vicinity map. You can see, it's the old abandoned parking garage is the site that they're looking at to wrap this project around. The handbook, the plan development handbook in the residential section, under residential commercial mixed-use standards section, requires that a maximum net square footage be in the mixed-use development area, which is this area in here, a total of 416,000 square feet. So in my staff report, I've provided a table to show you that. With the proposed square footage at this point, we're well below that 416,000 square feet at 281,933 square feet. On May 6th of the 2015, a site plan review application was approved for this project, which addressed the site design and also the architecture of the project. The apartment condominium plans have been submitted to the city and are in plan check currently. Today before you is the tentative map to construct 209 condominium units. Oops, this is a different, sorry, buried. You can see here, this is the existing parking garage that they're going to wrap the units around. This is the site plan showing the units wrapped around. There are going to be 109 one-bedroom units with one bathroom, and then 100 two-bedroom with two bathrooms. The development of the waterfront at Marina will not change the pedestrian circulation in the area, and the primary vehicular access to this property will be from off Lincoln Way, and then also from this parking lot right here to the south. They can enter here, and they can enter up in here to the building, to the parking structure. In conformance with the master plan, the waterfront project will be an infill project with the completion of a development started in 2008. The waterfront will be located within the activity center of number seven in our TOD master plan, which is the Marina Gateway Drive and Lincoln Way area. The proposed density is 55.7 dwelling units per acre, and given the substantial investment to date of building the parking garage, its prominent location on the Marina waterfront and the blighting influence of this unused four-story parking structure, it's important to the community to facilitate the completion of this project. The proposed tentative map is designed to conform to the Marina Village Plan Development Handbook and also our TOD residential standards. The condominium housing will provide new housing units, which will increase the residential population within the Marina area. And just for informational purposes, here is the architectural elevations of the buildings. And as I said, these are informational, it's not part of the tentative map project. And they were reviewed as part of the site plan review, and the architectural elevations actually are in, right now, for review under the building permit. Staff is recommending approval with 12 conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question. First question, page five in the report, you're saying there maybe there's a mistake or something. It's saying that you're going to go into the project off of Lincoln Way, from the north side, and then leave in the south in the parking, out through the parking and on to Harbor Cove Way. And you were talking about both of them being entrances.
There are entrances and exits, both of them.
Are they? Oh.
It's just, it's just not written that way.
It's just not written that way in the report. It's written that you're coming from the north. And I'm fine with the other way, I just think we ought to correct it if I'm wrong.
No, no. Out of the parking lot.
But that's the, that's the...
The intent is that they can exit, entrance, enter or exit from both sides, north or south.
Then, and I'm fine with that, I just heard then the presentation differently.
And the roads in this area are designed, it's always been anticipated to have this kind of density in this area, so the roads are designed to accommodate that traffic.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I was trying to think, and I couldn't quite tell from the maps, the Lincoln Way at that point is, is a divided street, isn't it? There's a median? Or is there not? Yes, there is a median. So the entrance will be to, from the, only going east on Lincoln, turning in, and when you exit, you will only be able to turn east, right, and need to make a U-turn or something if you intend to go west.
Yeah. So if you wanted to go westbound, you'd have to go out the parking lot onto Harbor Drive, Cove Drive, and then you could make a left onto Lincoln from Harbor Cove Drive.
If you went out, you went out on Lincoln, you would have to be making a U-turn. Is that legal to make a U-turn at that point, mister?
We need to come, yes. We go if you don't get caught.
They want to justify that you're here.
I just came to say goodbye to Mitch.
Commissioner Vols, I, you know, I did not analyze this, I had the time. I don't know if we have the, so the location of that right in, right out on Lincoln Way, I would have to look to see if there's adequate turning and spacing, because you do have to cross two lanes to get to the median, to wait to make the U-turn. So at this point, I can't answer yes or no.
Or if you go up a little further, excuse me, you just go out the main.
That was the point I was going to make. If you go up, there's ample space up there to make U-turns at the intersection.
Well, it just seems to me that we ought to, if, we ought to either see if U-turns can be made illegally, because people will, or if they aren't supposed to mark it appropriately.
And I'll point to the commission as well. You're approving a tentative map request tonight. A lot of these issues will be addressed with the final map and the final drawings. Those comments will likely come from Mr. John Erickson, our transportation engineer. The median may need to be modified potentially to handle those, or signage put up to discourage it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen, when, when this garage was constructed in 2008, I think somewhere around there, it was brought before the planning commission with the architecture and all that with the condominiums already around it that was approved?
Yes.
Has that part, I know the garage hasn't, because it's been built, but has the architecture elevations and all that been changed since that initial?
Yes, we've got, they amended the handbook, if you remember, last year, I think, we amended the handbook to allow five stories. They wanted to increase it, because originally in the handbook was only four stories. We amended the handbook to allow, with the new architecture. And then they did have a recorded final map on that condominium map, so they have revert, done a reversion to acreage, is what that's called. They eliminated that final map. And so it's back to one big parcel and not the individual. This map will then bring it back into the individual parcels.
Okay, yeah. I forgot about that, yeah.
Condos.
Yeah, but the concept out of Texas, called the Texas Wrap or something, remember?
Yeah, it's still, it's still a wrap, but it's a different architecture. They're not doing so much of that. It's a little different architecture. It's not the Marina theme kind of architecture, it's a little bit different. But they are doing five stories now instead of the four.
You don't, when you go into a condo, like you're, if I'm the parking garage.
It will be designed to have bridges on each level, so that you can park on the level that your condo is on.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more, any more questions for Karen? Okay, is the applicant here and would like to speak, come down. Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, my name's Dean Hilliard, I'm on the development team. Just to refresh, this is what we got approved before, so you guys can see it better.
I remember.
Yeah, so it's, it's a really modern architecture with some theming still for the, for the Marina. Anyway, we're here for, with questions, basically, but it's, I mean, it's, we're in full plan check. We're hoping to have construction starting in possibly March on the parking structure, which is a separate permit, and April on the, on the main building.
I want, I know it's just a tentative map, but have you secured the water rights?
I believe we have all the water rights, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You said construction on the, just again, out of curiosity, does Bill, the parking garage, which is now eight years old and probably not very well taken care of, does that require a significant upgrade in order to be usable?
It wasn't complete before, but we've had inspections done. The city's required us, which we want to do anyway, full inspections by the structural engineer, to make sure whatever we have to fix will be fixed as part of the permit process. It's basically redoing the existing permit. And so that's on a separate track from the building itself. But yes, it'll all be brought up to current modern standards and the current code and all that. That's all part of the plan check process we're in right now.
Right, and maybe a question? Because I noticed they're calling for geotechnical reports, so on that outside, you're going to do another geo-report?
All of that is...
Probably has to be redone, right?
A lot of that's already, exactly.
Because the codes changing and everything, so...
Yes, everything, it's, it's all being...
The exterior of those.
Yep, exactly. So that's all part of our process. We're in second round plan check comments right now, and some of those requirements are what you're talking about.
Okay.
Which we're doing. And test, the testing of the concrete and all that. We're excited to get this thing out of the ground.
Condos like New York City, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That expensive.
On the water.
They're going to be first class, I know.
Yeah, won't be quite Manhattan pricing, though.
Close.
Yeah.
Like $6,000 or something.
Yeah, not quite.
All right, any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bring it back to the, either discussion or entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion unless there's any more discussion.
No, go ahead.
I move to approve the waterfront at the Marina tentative map associated with PCN 15056, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 12 is listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion?
All right, seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Good luck, guys. Gentlemen? Now it's time of the meeting where we're going to present.
You're going to present.
Hmm? I'm going to present, we're going to present. The presentation of resolution number 209, and committing commissioner Mitch Nowicki for his service to the City of Sparks Planning Commission.
Let's get it.
Yeah, George, hand me that plaque. Oh, I got to read that. You gotta read it, huh?
Said the war as.
Whereas.
I'm not sure where as is, Jimmy.
Yeah, lots of them.
All right, resolution 209, it's got a very nice frame, I see that. Resolution recognizing the contributions of Commissioner Mitchell Nowicki. Whereas, Mitchell Nowicki was appointed to the Sparks Planning Commission on December 22nd, 2003, tried to throw a 19 in there, but has, and has continuously served since that date, and whereas Commissioner Nowicki has served as chairs of planning commission in 2009, and whereas Commissioner Nowicki served as an alternate to the regional planning commission, and whereas Commissioner Nowicki has unselfishly committed his time and knowledge to make significant contributions to the planning process of the City of Sparks during his tenure as a member of the Sparks Planning Commission, and whereas the Sparks Planning Commission meets on a regular basis, requiring Commissioner Nowicki's attendance at many public hearings, workshops, and study sessions, and whereas Commissioner Nowicki participated in the Sparks Planning Commission's review and approval of numerous major projects in Sparks, including the Deandria, Copper Canyon, Legends of the Sparks Marina, Foothills at Wingfield Springs, Kylie Ranch North, Pioneer's Meadows, Sparks Crossing, and Sparks Galleria, Plan Developments, and whereas Commissioner Nowicki was always available as a mentor sharing his experience and knowledge, and whereas every member of the Sparks Planning Commission, present and past, is proud to have served with Commissioner Nowicki, and whereas the Sparks Planning Commission recognizes Commissioner Nowicki's contributions to the planning commission and to the City of Sparks. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Sparks Planning Commission acknowledges and sincerely appreciates the invaluable contributions that Commissioner Mitchell Nowicki has made to the City of Sparks during his tenure as planning commissioner, passed and adopted this seventh day of January 2016 by the Sparks Planning Commission. So here it is.
Mitchell, there you go.
There you go, Mitchell.
There you go, there.
A lot of where as.
Where as's. Well, thank you, man.
Didn't trip over your tongue.
So I used to sit by Mitchell. And as always, thank you for helping me through my first years, Mitch. It was, you were always there to, you know, whisper things in my ear to help me along, so really appreciate that.
Thank you for the resolution. It's been a pleasure to serve the City of Sparks for the last 12 years.
Wow.
I've learned, I learned a lot. I was always known as the quiet one, and people, when I did talk, they knew I had something to say, but, so hopefully I helped etch out a spot in Sparks where everybody would be proud that we all were able to make the decisions that we made and do the things that we did.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to throw my two cents in too. I think I started in 2006, and I was one of the greenhorns that came in, and, I mean, I was talking to Kendall Montina and Fred Locken and them, and they were telling me stuff that was just going right over my head, I never had a clue. I turned to Mitch and I said, Mitch, what, what, what? And he talked to me in layman, in layman's terms, he kind of explained what was going on and, you know, the whole process. And I remember he was chair in a couple contentious planning commission meetings, I think even one had to do with lazy eight, didn't it?
Lazy five, yeah.
Lazy five, and we were here till one in the morning one time, and I'm thinking, my God, how can he chair this? The place was jam-packed. But, I mean, I want to thank Mitch for his support, especially for me in the early goings, and he's just been a good man, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to also say, Mitch, you've done a great job. I've really enjoyed being on planning commission with you. Yeah, my whole time you've been here for the last six years, and great job. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Chair, is it all right? I have a few comments. Merrily would you like? The two faces at the end of this dais are, well, not the two at the end, the two...
Sort of the end.
Represent an era that was very busy, and staff and the planning commission Mitch that you seem to have sat on forever, shared a lot of time together.
Yes, we did.
A lot of that staff is no longer with us. Karen and Armando and I are some of the remaining. In my time here, I think of all the boards and commissions and councils that I've been a part of and observed and worked with, the most difficult, in my opinion, is that of the citizen planner. The amount of time and effort that it takes to learn the difference between a master plan zoning, what an RTC impact fee is, what NRS 278 means, state, federal regulations. Back in the day, I was here talking about exciting things like intersection capacity analysis and concurrency of infrastructure for sewer. It's a lot. And Mitch, on behalf of the staff, I want to thank you for paying, paying attention.
Still don't know it all, so have to look at the book.
I always felt you were well-prepared, answered questions well, asked questions of staff, very respectful to staff, makes our job a lot easier, and I always found you very respectful to the citizens who came here to express their opinions. And that's a lot, and on behalf of the staff, we thank you very much.
Appreciate it, it was great working with you guys, too.
Thank you.
Take it back. Take it back.
Doug has my hair long.
Not that good, is it? You're telling the truth here.
There's a grandpa. Mosquito.
Nice, thank you.
Quite the front cover, too.
Very nice.
All right, thank you, Mitch.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Last one, Mitch. So this is for general public comment, if anybody would like to speak about anything that was on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Move to comments from commissioners.
Just, I think I told everybody that's involved, but there is a regional planning... Just, I think I told everybody that's involved, but there is a regional planning committee, commission meeting on the 28th, and I will be out of town that week, so Jamie Feun, who will be the alternate for that, that meeting.
Oh, look at that. You can stab somebody with that if they come after you.
Murder weapon. All the glass we approved is part of it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
It's very nice.
Hopefully Karen won't be angry any night and recognize that as the weapon.
That's great.
All right, Mitch, I'll entertain an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'm not going to second him, we're going to stay.
It's 1:00.
Let's vote.
All right, well Mitch wants to leave, so he's, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.